Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Friday, March 15th, 2019, at 8:00 in the McCullough Hearing Room. Welcome, everyone, this morning. It's nice to see our Fire Department representative here. Welcome. Thank you for coming this morning. The main item on the agenda, the only item on the agenda, is the interviews of the Fire Chief candidates. So before we bring the candidates up, the board has in front of them some questions that if we would take just a couple minutes and go through, and the board can select one, if not two, of the questions. The process we're going to use today is the candidates will come up, they'll have two minutes to give an introduction. At that time, the board will go down the table. Each board member will ask one question. The candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. Then we'll come back around again, so the board members will again be able to ask another question. And at the end, the candidate will have a two-minute reply or anything he might like to further add to the board. So that being said, as far as the questions go in front of us, Selectmen Shifrin would like to do question six and question 10. I believe I would like to do question nine. Mr. Shea, do you have a first preference?
I would do question three.
Okay. Mrs. Faniff?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And as Selectmen Kalenda comes in, we will ask him the same. For a second pass at questions, you can certainly ask a question that's here, or if you have something you'd like to ask the candidates. I would only ask that we ask the question to both candidates. So as far as the second question, Mr. Shea, do you have a preference? Or would you like to just kind of go along and see based on maybe some of the answers you're hearing?
Yeah, leading towards eight.
Okay.
That's still three.
Yep.
I'm sorry, leading towards question eight for my second choice.
Mrs. Faniff, do you have a second choice?
Eight would have been my second choice. I'll leave it. Sorry, eight would have been my second choice, however, I'll wait.
Okay.
Depending the answers of the other six.
Okay. And I will take number 15 for myself. So, perfect, just so we have kind of a guide as to the way that we're going to go. So at this time, yes, I guess we'll continue forward and have the first candidate come And just for anyone in the audience as well, there is no public comment during this. I'm sure you knew that already, but just for the public at home watching, they may wonder why nobody's asking any other questions, so thank you. Actually, while we have a second, I would like to, on behalf of the board, thank the Fire Chief Screening Committee. I see Mr. Stivers is here. We would like to extend our gratitude once again for all of the hard work that your committee has done in getting us to this point. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome. I just don't know if you've gone over the process downstairs, so I'm just going to take a second and let you know kind of the format of what we're going to do here. At the start, we're going to give you two minutes to kind of introduce yourself, give a little bit of information about yourself to the board. After that, the board will be going down the line, asking a question of you. You'll have two minutes to answer the question. The board will then come back around and ask a second question of you. At the conclusion of that, you'll have the opportunity to have two minutes, kind of as a conclusion, to kind of share anything else that you think might be pertinent to the board, or relevant even to expand on one of the questions that you've already had. So, Mr. McPherson, welcome. And here's your two minutes. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Again, my name is Neil McPherson. I've been in the fire service for about 28 years. I currently work on numerous departments. I am full-time in Wayland, and we have 28 people there. Been there for three years. I'm a deputy in Sherburne, Massachusetts, which is a primarily call department. And I also work as a call firefighter in Ashland. And I think that's been very advantageous for me, because I've been able to see full-time fire departments, how they operate, and do that on a daily basis. Also, in Sherburne, work in a call format, and certainly stay up on the trends and the issues associated with some of the qualified departments. And also work in Ashland, which is a combination department. As you can see from my resume, I also have some corporate experience, where for a number of years I worked for a large insurance company. I think that's helped me greatly in the sense that at one point in time, I had a budget of roughly $4 million and was responsible for 73 people. So I not only have municipal experience, but I also have corporate experience.
Wonderful. Thank you. The first question will be from Selectmen Shifrin. Imagine one of the fire department shifts is having difficulties. The firefighters are not getting along with each other. The issue seems to be about trust. What would you do?
So, when it comes to shift and shift dynamics, I think it's very important, obviously, that people get along. In this situation, what I would do is sit down with the members of that shift and try and find out what the issues are. After sitting down with the shift, I would want to make sure I sit down with the shift officer, talk to the shift officer, talk about what my plan would be, to have a conversation with the entire shift. And if there's individuals in that shift in specific situations we would need to talk to them about, we would do that. I think it's very important that we set expectations for staff, and that we are able to get along, because the fire service is unique in the sense that not only do you work together, but you live together. And these things do happen, so it's really an issue, I think, of communication and expectations with the staff, and we work through these items and these issues.
Wonderful. Thank you. My first question to you is, how would you handle conflict with another department? With a public official, with the local business, or a member of the public?
So I know conflict never happens, but having said that, what I'd say to you is, again, it's communication to me. I deal with many and most of the issues that come up, especially with residents in Wayland today, and I find in most cases, the first thing you need to do is you need to go ahead and you need to have a conversation with that person. You need to find out, what is the issue there? All right? Once you understand what the issue is, I think you then have to come up with whatever your game plan becomes to address that issue. In many cases, it's simply an educational issue, where you need to go ahead and explain to somebody why something was done, all right? In some cases, maybe this person doesn't want to understand or accept just the realities of the way things may operate. In those cases, again, you try to talk to them, explain, and let them know that you hear them, because they want to be heard. You always try to be empathetic. And by the way, if someone brings a complaint, or there is a conflict, I always try to make sure that after we've had initial conversation, especially if it's with a department head or someone else, that I follow back up. Relationships are critical in this business, as we all know, in small communities. So building department, councilman, aging, police chief, et cetera, you have to have excellent relationships with all department heads, and you work through issues.
Wonderful. Thank you. Selectmen Shea.
Thank you. Thanks for your interest in the position as well. So the question I had, so obviously, if selected, you'd be coming in from the outside, and I'm just curious what your approach would be as someone coming into a new department, and how you see your first day, how you see things at the end of the month, and at the end of the, assuming you were appointed and a year had passed, what impact would you have made on the department, your peers, and the community?
So I've just gone through this three years ago, when I went to Wayland, and I can tell you, it's a very difficult process, in the sense that you're the outsider coming into an organization. So the most important thing I think you can do is initially learn and listen. Every organization in the fire service, you may assume, okay, it's a fire department, everybody operates the same. Well, everybody doesn't operate the same. There's different issues in different communities based upon the size of the community, et cetera. So my approach would be, come in here, listen, and learn. There's a lot of talent in the Southborough Fire Department today that can share a lot of information. So at first, learn, listen, meet department heads. You know, I would say that as, you know, in the first year, collect information, right, about what is important. The other part becomes, it's very important to talk to the Selectmen, the town administrator, about what are the collective goals that we need to be achieving. I actually did develop a first-year plan that I will hand out, if you would like to see that, that goes through the steps, and I broke it down in three-month intervals. But it's very important, again, to learn, listen, and develop relationships.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen Faniff.
This is a prepared list of questions, so each candidate receives the same question. Describe the level of discipline that a chief may administer, and under what circumstances you would exercise these rights. What exercises do you have, excuse me, what experience do you have in implementing discipline?
So, as you're well aware, that there is a collective bargaining agreement, that the Fire Chief has to work within the terms of a collective bargaining agreement. So when it comes to discipline, there's different levels of discipline. All right, I would say to you that clearly, if we are setting expectations, and if there's an issue, in most cases, I have found in my experience, that if we deal with an individual and have a conversation, a coaching conversation, that in many cases, and we set that expectation, that that resolves the issue. If, in fact, that does not resolve the issue, there is progressive discipline. Progressive discipline is the way we manage these situations. Progressive discipline, in many cases, becomes verbal at first, after you've tried to coach the individual. There can be a written, then there can be suspension, if necessary, and termination. And the other part that's very important, of course, is if you're having any type of disciplinary conversation with any union members, they have a right to union representation to be in the room when you have those conversations.
Okay, thank you. From Selectmen Shifrin, sorry. What type of training do you see as essential for all members of your department? How would you prioritize those training needs, and how would you ensure that all members of the department are adequately trained?
So training is a big issue in the fire department. It is difficult because of the way the shifts work for firefighters. In many cases, people do have other jobs, and obviously, families and lives outside the fire service. I'm in the training office for Wayland, and what I've done and would do here is to develop a yearly training plan, and then also a monthly training plan. So, training is critical for us, and I would focus on what I consider to be high danger, low-frequency events. The events that don't happen often, for example, structured fires, but could have very dangerous outcomes if, in fact, we're not prepared for those. So I would also make sure that we focus our training on EMS, because EMS is a large part of the call volume here in most communities in Massachusetts, and fire. How would we make sure that people attend? In Wayland, we've started doing a lot of our training on shift. We have, on a quarterly basis, department-wide training. We try to encourage people to be there. Certain trainings are, in fact, mandatory, and those trainings, we typically try to do on-shift for people. And if they can't make their shifts, then we ask them to come back at a different shift on their time to go ahead and make that training up.
Wonderful. Thank you. From myself, what are the uncomfortable decisions that accompany the position of chief? Please give an example of a decision that you made that was unpopular, yet was the right decision for the department and/or the community.
So, a number of years ago, I had one of my officers who was the best man in my wedding. And unfortunately, the best man in my wedding made a very bad decision when he was operating on the ambulance. So it was brought to my attention that he went ahead and he did something that was reasonably, what shall we say, egregious. So unfortunately, you know, I knew what the right thing to do was, is I had to bring him in, I had to have a conversation with him, and I had to discipline him. But it's very important that you're consistent with your discipline. So as much as that was difficult for me to do, I knew it was the right thing that had to be done based upon what had happened that day, and the fact that he was one of my best friends, and to this day is one of my best friends. But I find that if you talk to people when there's a disciplinary action, you help people understand why it's an issue, and you help coach people, that people will understand that, and you'll continue to have a good relationship and move forward from those events.
Wonderful. Thank you. Selectmen Shea.
So I guess, similar to that, can you tell us about a situation in the workplace that you would handle differently if you could go back and do it over again? And what would you change, and more importantly, why would you make a different decision?
Great question. So I'd say, early in my career as a Fire Chief, when it comes to inspectional activities, that there can be an area of grayness relative to interpretation of the codes. And I'll never forget that I went to one house, and it was a person who lived in town, the family that lived in town for many, many years. And in that case, in making the decision, it was about smoke detectors in a house and placement of smoke detectors. What I'd say is, I gave them probably a little bit too much latitude in that one case. And I learned an important lesson after that, because I had another resident who came up to me and said, it was like two months later, well, you let Mr. Smith go ahead and do this, all right, but you're not letting me do this. So I learned very early on in my career that, again, you have to be consistent in the way you interpret codes, you have to treat everybody with fairness and in the same fashion. You can't have different sets of rules. So I learned very early on that you have to be consistent.
Thank you. Selectmen Faniff.
In your current role as the Assistant Chief, how involved are you in collective bargaining and grievances?
Very involved. I sat through the last round of collective bargaining. When it comes to grievances, the chief and I work together on all grievances and all disciplinary or performance issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. If you'd like to take the next two minutes, and if there's anything you'd like to add or you think might be important for us to know as well, please.
So I'd just like to say thank you, again, for the opportunity today. You know, in terms of myself, and why I think I'm a good fit for the town of Southborough, as you know from my history, I've worked in Sherburne, I've worked in Wayland, similar communities, these are the communities that I want to be in. It's important to me, as a Fire Chief, to be involved in those communities. I enjoy the outreach to the communities, working with the elderly, working with the children, the communities. I'm from this area, which I think has a distinct advantage. I'm very familiar with District 14, the state mobilization plan. I'm the treasurer for district, or Fire District 14. When it comes to my networking, I'll just give you one quick example. Recently, in Wayland, we were struggling to find a paramedic, and I was sitting with the chief, and he told me, geez, Neil, we have two applicants, they're not very good, and I'm not quite sure what to do. And I said, give me two days, and I made phone calls. And within two days, we virtually had five super-qualified candidates, three of whom were academy-trained. Now, at the end of that, one had to drop out. One of them, we have in queue for probably our next hire, because we didn't hire him, but we did find a paramedic who also was a call firefighter, very qualified, working shifts over there. So I'd just say, being from this area does have some distinct advantages. I know all the Fire Chiefs around here, I've worked with them, I have that personal relationship already, and I just say to you, again, I have a lot of experience with personnel management, and, you know, have a track history or a track record that certainly, if you speak to anybody in Wayland and/or Ashland, I think that they would probably share with you that I'm a very collaborative person, who's also strategic in terms of the vision and the things that we've implemented. We've made a bunch of changes in Wayland in terms of good changes, whether it's our personnel management system, whether it's the, one of the programs we rolled out for our senior citizens, W.A.C.S.CURE, which is a multi-pronged program, I won't spend too much time on that. But, oh, and last thing I should say is, when it comes to grant writing and the fiscal realities, I understand the fiscal challenges that you face. In the last 12 months, I've written grants which totaled about $199,000, including AFG Grant for 160 for air packs, a MYA Grant for 8,000. We needed some CPR mannequins, which we couldn't afford. I got two different grants for that, one from Metro West Physicians Association, and also reached out to FM Global and just got $8,000 for, again, fire education and safety. So I understand that when it comes to the revenue side of this, I'm also someone who's aggressive in terms of ambulance fees and inspectional fees, and believe that they should be looked at every couple years, as there's some opportunities there, not to offset and not to, what should we say, exceed the amount of the fire department budget, but to help offset the services that we provide. So I'd also just say I have a fair amount of experience over my 25-plus years, and I'd be thrilled if I had the opportunity to work in Southborough.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, and thank you for your interest in Southborough as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll pause for two seconds. We will get the next candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a recess for two minutes, five minutes at this point. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Thank you for your interest in Southborough as well.
Oh, thank you.
For format purposes, they may have gone over it with you downstairs, but I'll go over it again. You're going to have a two-minute introduction to share some information about yourself, anything you'd like us to know. We're going to do two rounds of questions, we're going to go through the board once, then go through the board again. You'll have two minutes to answer the questions, and at the end, you'll have two minutes to share any additional information that you think might be pertinent or even based on some of the questions if you'd like to expand on.
Perfect, thank you.
So, thank you and welcome.
Well, again, good morning. My name is Steve Achilles, and you have a lot of information on me from this process. I want to first thank the steering committee or the search committee and the members of that group, because really, it was very challenging and actually very reflective and insightful. And I learned a lot about Southborough in the last month and a half. As you may know, and for other people, I'm currently the fire chief in the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I've been in the fire service for about 34 years. I started in a small community in New Hampshire, did some volunteering also, and over the years, as a paramedic and a firefighter moved up in ranks, I was able to secure a job in Portsmouth in 2000 as the deputy fire chief. And as fortune had it, I got to move up to the assistant chief, and then six years ago, I was appointed the fire chief. Portsmouth is kind of my hometown right now, although I did, it was put in the paper, but many years ago, I, when I was 11, 10, 11, and 12, I lived in Westboro. My father was relocated for a job, and we're over there, so we were familiar with the area, and that was one of the draws when this position came open. I'm married, this year will be 30 years, which we're pretty excited about. I have two daughters, one's getting married this year, one got married last year, so May may be a busy time for me, at least for a week. And I guess I want to make sure you know that this opportunity came up kind of unexpectedly. I was not involved in the first round of the process. My wife and I downsized, had some change in our life to make it a little more flexible and easier. And when I saw this posted in late January, it really piqued my interest, not because so much the fire chief job, but the level that the community went to to identify what you wanted. It seemed that there was a lot of thought put into where you wanted to go, where the town wanted to go, where the fire department wanted to go. And I think when you take that, like the ideal characteristics, the minimum qualifications, it really started drawing me in, and I started making some phone calls to colleagues of mine in Massachusetts. And I got to visit here a few times, and when I put my resume in and my cover letter, I felt like I was all in, and through the whole process, I still feel that way.
Wonderful, thank you very much. First question from Selectman Shifrin. Imagine one of the fire department shifts is having difficulties. The firefighters are not getting along with each other. The issue seems to be about trust. What do you do?
Well, if it's, I think, two things. One is if it's a trust issue on the shift, that's something internally in a culture that starts at the fire chief level. Trust and integrity are important. The department, it's important for the members of the department to believe in each other and trust each other and have an inherent trust. Also, a respect for positions in the ranks. And I think it's important to start off, if I were your chief, that communication across the board. So, when this would come up on a shift, it's very important to offline speak to the officer to get a sense of what's going on. And then also, in a group setting, and hopefully a small group setting, not across the whole department, but meet with that shift and try to get a sense of what is the issue? What is the core problem? Is it a lack of communication? Is miscommunication? Is there a conflict in the direction they think that shift is heading in, or is it across the shift? Collaboration and communication are very important, and I think if you can establish that early, and I know that going into this, I'm going to have to gain the trust of the members of the department, and, but they will always inherently, off the bat, have my trust and confidence, because they've done the job for a while, and I think they deserve that. But I understand that I'm going to have to gain theirs.
Great, thank you. Question from myself. How would you handle conflict with another department, with a public official or with a local business or a member of the public?
So, are you saying in another community or in our community?
Within our community, within our town departments, with public officials.
Okay. It starts off with dialogue. I think it's important that when a new chief starts here, they need to reach out to key stakeholders, and that is outside the department and inside the department. It's with department heads. I know there's key businesses and institutions in this community that would be important to reach out to, so establishing a rapport earlier. And I think, you know, front-loading that in the first 100 days here is important. And then now you create an opportunity where you can talk back and forth, either by phone or in person. I'm hoping, based on the way this community is set up, is, I think, there's ample opportunity for informal meetings and discussions. And as long as they know that they can call me anytime. In my current organization, there's a lot of people who have my cell phone number that are not members of the department, are members of my family. And I think if you create that open dialogue, now you can create opportunities that if there is a conflict, you can nip it in the bud earlier than later.
Great, thank you. Selectman Shay.
Thank you. So, obviously, if you're selected, you're somebody coming in from the outside into our department. And I'm wondering if you could spend a little bit of a time discussing your approach to that, and how do you see your first day on the job? How do you see things after the first month? And assuming you were appointed and a year had passed, what impact would you have made on the department, your peers, and the community?
In 2000, I came from the outside to a large organization as a chief officer. It was, I learned a lot of lessons, I took a lot of knocks, tripped up a little bit, but it was a very valuable learning experience, and I think I would carry that forward here. It is challenging coming from the outside. You're, at one part, a new employee, so, and the firefighters can appreciate this, you're a probationary employee in some respects, but you're also the chief of the department. So, I've, over the last few weeks, I've looked at, what, 100 days where I would be. And the first part of that is that coming in and communicating earlier than later, again, creating opportunities to introduce myself. So far, the fire department hasn't been able to ask me anything, and I think you need to create opportunities for them to do that and to know what my intentions are, what my approach to the department is, what my core beliefs and my core values and what I hold important as a chief officer and as a member of a fire department. So, that will go a long way. I think measured, appropriate changes, but only based on where do they see the department going, what do they see as important issues, what are not important issues. So, I'm not, my intention is not to come here and turn it into a department that I've previously worked in. It's to enhance this department, and I think that's what a year is, a year from now, I hope that's what it is, is, there's a unique opportunity in Southborough right now, a new fire chief, a new public safety building, a lot of support for the fire department and public safety in the community, but that's fleeting. It'll be really exciting for It'll be really exciting for four or five months. And then you have to continue and I think that's where maybe I would be a little bit apart from other candidates is, my goal is to continue that momentum to enhance the department, provide direction and support to the members of the department and also hopefully enhance what we provide to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Kalenda.
Chief, good morning.
Good morning.
What would you say is the most challenging assignment you've ever worked? What did you learn from it and how did it make you a better person?
Most challenging assignment? I mentioned this in in the screening committee's interview. I've been to a lot of fires and those are challenging in themselves. We had a general armed fire a couple of years ago. And I will say that, that, the fire itself wasn't the challenge and I'm not trying to make this like I'm Boston's, you know, fire commissioner. But the challenge was asking members of my department and other departments to do things that put themselves at a high level of risk in knowing that I own that and that, that, I think that was the challenge, most challenging part because you ask a lot of members day-to-day and most of it is not life and death. But when you ask your members to put themselves, kind of push the envelope and that building ultimately collapsed, they were not involved, but that was probably my most challenging assignment to date because at that point, we can talk about administration, we can talk about budgets, but at the core of it, we, the fire department provides the service. And on that date, I realized that I asked a lot and they gave a lot and at the end of the day, we saved a lot.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Selectman Faniff.
It's a follow-up to one of your answers. You mentioned communication is what your goal would be. And if, and my question would, if communication fails, describe the level of discipline that a chief may administer and under what circumstances would you exercise these rights?
A department or any organization has to have guardrails. And my goal is, like on the highway, is keep them in their, maybe not quite in their lane, but keep them on the road and head in the same direction. Discipline is really an opportunity to change behaviors or correct behaviors. I think if you set the clear expectations in the beginning, you have the department, I know, I don't know at what level they participate in the policies and procedures of the department. That would be something important you want to start off with is, here's the rules and here's the, how we play. And they have to participate and have to buy into that. So I think that starts the process because then corrective actions really are not as, or discipline is minimized and you're really coaching and mentoring. However, there is a point where coaching and mentoring and counseling don't work. And I suspect that in a policy, if it's not already written, we would make sure there's one about progressive discipline and that's exactly what it means is it's progressive in nature and appropriate to what the offense is. The ultimate goal is improve performance and correct actions that are distracted to the organization or to the individuals. So I've disciplined people in my organization. I've counseled. I've written warnings. I've done verbal warnings. I've suspended with pay. I've recommended suspending without pay. Those are far and few between. So based on the offense and the frequency, that I'm prepared to do that and I've done it before. We have to be accountable. We're public employees and we have to be accountable to you and the community and to each other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from Selectman Shiffrin. What types of training do you see as essential for all members of your department? How would you prioritize those training needs and how would you ensure that all members of the department are adequately trained?
So as I understand it, you, the organization has a training officer. So I think to say what all training, what all the training is required or what's lacking would be presumptive because I, I don't know. So that conversation, I think, is very important to have early on with the training officer. And really doing a sort of SWOT analysis, you know, what are the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities? Where do the employees need to grow and where are they lacking? Core things to me operate around accountability and safety and some of the fundamentals. You are an EMS transporting agency. I've, I'm a paramedic. I've run agencies. I know that often we focus on fire training and forget the foundation of what we do is EMS training. And I suspect that with the number of paramedics you have, this is, that's probably a robust program. But when I talk about accountability and safety, everybody should have instant command training at all levels so they know how to operate and I suspect that that's occurring. And the next one is the core as far as safety and survival and knowing how to operate all the equipment they have. After that, I think now we can build upon strategy and tactics, leadership development. I think that's one area that I've noticed through conversations that maybe needs to be enhanced. But again, I think it's imperative that the, the department start to establish where they need to go and what they need to see and I need to be supportive of that within the budgetary constraints and prioritize those things. But if, if I were to tell you what's more important to me is accountability and safety and those things that support that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next question from myself. What are the uncomfortable decisions that accompany the position of chief? Please give an example of a decision that you made that was unpopular, yet was the right decision for the department and/or the community.
If you've Googled me, probably a lot of them. There, nothing's free. And we received a grant many years ago for a fire boat. We were on a river. And I was very supportive of that boat and I would led the charge on getting a very large fire boat, thirty-three feet long. Enhanced operations, trained everybody. And in our organization, if you were a trained operator, you got an extra stipend. Over the years, we tried to start making, developing the mission of the boat. So unfortunately, what we did is we bought a boat or got a boat and then we decided to create a mission. That, I've realized that's not how it works. So over time, what we found that it was, nothing's free. It was a very expensive endeavor. We were spending, you know, fifteen thousand dollars a year just to overhaul it and get it ready. If anybody has a boat, you know what? It's a big hole in the water. You put money in. After a couple of years of being chief, I recognized that we were spending money to maintain the boat and the stipends for the operators at the expense of staffing and other, we were allocating funds not to our core mission, our essential services. So a very unpopular decision was mine to transfer the boat because it was a federal asset to another agency that was looking for a boat. And that was somewhat painful. I thought it was the right thing to do, one for the community because again, we were spending a lot of money and we were missing opportunities to enhance other programs and to ensure essential services, especially as the city was growing. So that was probably, I learned a lot of lessons from that. One, don't get in that position in the first place, if you can help it. But it was a very unpopular decision internally and I would imagine if you searched enough, you would see enough comments on that decision I made.
Thank you. Selectman Shea.
Wondering if you could tell us about a situation in the workplace that you would handle differently? If you could go back and do it over again, what would you change? More importantly, why would you make that change?
I find that often I'm, I try to be very transparent and I'm not really good at misleading people or lying. And unfortunately, sometimes I'm too honest. And I've actually had to preface sometimes when people ask questions, if you want, if you really want to know the answer, be prepared for the answer you're gonna get. I'm not condescending. I'm not disrespectful, but often I, I'm too honest. And so I wouldn't say one situation particularly, but in my mind, and maybe I learned this from my mother, young men get angry and then for five or ten minutes and then they're fine. Having daughters, that's different. They, they don't do that.
I can attest to that.
And I think sometimes when I am honest, to me, it's out there and it's over. And I fail to recognize that sometimes for a lot, some people, it's not over. And I need to, I need to temper how I approach things a little bit differently and maybe not be as honest or brutally honest. But that also goes into who you, who are you talking with and if, maybe that's a fault of mine is, I think I established very positive relationships, but maybe I'm missing something. So I try to change it and I try to be attentive to that daily now.
Thank you.
Selectman Kalenda.
Chief, what would you say is the greatest challenge to the fire service today?
The greatest challenge of fire service? I find that you're reading in the paper and we've experienced it firsthand in my organization and maybe this organization, but across the country is workplace cancer. And I'm not gonna say that cancer itself is the challenge. It's devastating and it's affecting a lot of firefighters and there's multiple reasons why and how and there's a lot, I know Massachusetts just passed legislation to strengthen that. New Hampshire's strengthened that. But the challenge is to change behaviors within the fire service because we will always believe that's extremely important to prevent cancer, but sometimes we're not willing and individual firefighters or fire departments aren't willing to make the tough changes to prevent or curb the exposures. An example would be, I gave a presentation during the assessment center on gross decon at a fire scene. So before you leave the fire scene, there's a simple way to just grossly decon firefighters, but you get wet. And even in my own organization, getting people to know that we're going to do that and there's a reason for it to come around. It's uncomfortable. It's, firefighters typically don't want to have clean gear and clean helmets. So sometimes we're our own worst enemies. We're advocates to change the, and identify things that affect us health and safety-wise, but often we're hesitant to make those changes on a personal level or department level. And I, I find that probably one of the biggest challenges in the fire service today.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Selectman.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. You have two minutes. If there's anything else you'd like to share about yourself or anything that you'd like to expand on and one of the questions that you've already been asked?
No, I, I think really closing is, this is a, again, a great opportunity for the town of Southborough. New fire chief. I know there's some hesitancy and probably some concern in the fire department and even the town. What are you going to get? But I, I can assure you that up to this point, this process has been about me. I'm trying to sell myself, trying to present information. I've, you have a lot of the documents I've filled out, my resume. But I can assure you that if I'm your fire chief, it's not gonna be about me anymore. It's about you. It's about the fire department. It's about the community. And I'm a member of Rotary and one of the, the mantras is, you know, service above self. And I think if, I try to live that. Again, if I'm your fire chief, it's, it's not me. It's, and I would say that of the firefighters and the officers of the department, at some point, you know, it's not about you. It's about the community. It's about the services we provide. And again, I'm committed to that and I can assure you that that would be my approach if I was your fire chief.
Great. Thank you and thank you for your interest in Southborough as well.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
So at this time, we do have on the agenda the ability to deliberate and select a preferred fire chief candidate. Obviously, to start the deliberation, I'd like to poll the board. I know it's been done differently sometimes in the past. I personally, I think I'm ready to make the decision today. Selectman Shiffrin?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am as well, yes.
Same, while delayed in getting here today, I'm quite familiar with both candidates.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Faniff. Okay. So I will start off by giving some of my thoughts. I think we were fortunate to have two very strong candidates come forward. I think the town was, was very well-served. Again, I think the, the screening committee did a wonderful job bringing us the candidates that they did. They both had wonderful attributes. There was one candidate for me though, for a variety of reasons, kind of stuck out. Based on kind of my vision and what my hope for the department would be, I liked very much so on Chief Achilles when he told the story about the boat and that staffing was more important to me, for me anyway, that the staffing was more important than the boat itself. It was an unpopular decision. At the end of the day, I think the safety of our community is the most important thing and I think for me, that was a big step in showing that. I also appreciated his communication and collaboration. That's something I believe very, very strongly in. I liked also, I, I think they both touched on very different things, but for me, this candidate was one that stood out. I appreciated on the training question that he would take the lead and leave the lead be with the training officer and kind of follow his lead on that as well. And I liked the dialogue. There was a variety of things for me. Again, we were fortunate to have two wonderful candidates. But for me, Chief Achilles kind of met the goals and the vision that I myself was kind of looking for, for the department. Mr. Shea?
Sure. So I had the opportunity to review some of the videos from the assessment center. Couldn't see all of them and it was a challenge at the time. The video portion of it wasn't up. But as I listened to the technical assessment from the two chiefs, and again, I echo the sentiment, we have two excellent candidates. And I listened to Mr. McPherson's first and again, as a layperson, he sounded excellent in his approach to that situation. As I then listened to Chief Achilles, and I found this the same with, with the responses to the answers. There just seemed to be that those extra details that were provided that I think were important. And it just, you know, gave me that, that added insight. And I think in the, in the responses to the questions that we asked, that additional level of detail came through for me again as well. I liked the statement that he made to the first question, to Mr. Shiffrin's question that, you know, he is in a position where he needs to gain the trust of the department. And I was particularly impressed with the closing statement that he made, that it's no longer about him, but it is about the department. And I think that's why we're And I think that's why we're, have invested so much time and effort into this is because of the department. And I think that Chief Achilles sees that. You know, for those reasons, he rose to the top, in my opinion.
So I agree with my colleagues. I was very impressed that with the candidates that we were provided, I think our public safety search committee was, did an exemplary job. We were well-served by what they did and the amount of effort. I think in Chief Achilles, I think we're going to get a very humble but strong leader and I look forward to supporting him.
Selectman Fannin.
I took the opportunity to speak to several members of the selection committee and ask some individual questions. So I feel I came here today prepared. What I found exciting about both candidates is their experience in the fire service and their communication skills. I find Chief Achilles, however, with his communication skills, it wasn't about him, it's what he wants to foster within a department and see a department grow and have the members in that department succeed on their own with his help. And I think it's time that we look to an individual leading a department fostering growth with its members and cohesiveness. And I think this is the individual that can do it.
Thank you. Selectman Shifrin, anything?
I am.
Yeah. That's a very good point, Brian. I was going to bring that up as well, that with his paramedic background as well, where we're gearing more towards an EMS-type department, that I thought that was very strong and very important as well. So that being said.
I would move that we appoint Stephen Achilles as our next fire chief.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, sure. Thank you. And thank you to the department for being here as well. And, you know, I hope that, in your opinion as well, that we made the right decision. I think it was, it was a great interview process all along and I think the end result is something that will benefit the whole department. So, thank you.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.